We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, June 29, 2023. Our invocation will be done by Bishop Anthony Walker from Kingdom of Christ Church Ministries. If you would please come forward, and after the invocation, we'll have our Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Praise God. Madam Mayor, Chairman, to all this illustrious council, to everyone in attendance, let us pray. Gracious Father, in the name of Jesus, we give you praise and we give you glory for your goodness and for your mercy. We pray, Father God, for your counsel tonight, that your Spirit would rest upon this assembly, Lord God, that your perfect will will be done. As the business of this council is transacted, we pray, Father, for the blessings of the great city of Douglasville, all of its residents and visitors. Lord God, we ask in the name of Jesus that you would shower down upon us, Lord, that we will live a quiet and a peaceable life. Let this city be a city that's set upon a hill, Lord God, that will be an emblem of your glory and your grace. In the name of Jesus, we ask it, and for thy glory. And we all say it, amen. God bless you.
[inaudible]
Republic, which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just as for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We appreciate you leading us in the pledge, and thank you, Bishop Walker, for the invocation. We appreciate the prayer. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a legislative work session. We will not be voting on issues tonight. These are information that we will receive this evening. We'll vote on next week at our regular work session. So this is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken tonight. But again, will be taken on next Monday at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates section for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol issues I'd like to go over with these items, and then we can get into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations. On a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for the governing body to make our decisions, we will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in us turning the microphone off and discontinuing your comments. Only one person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation while you're at the microphone. We ask that you would please come to the microphone and present your information to the chairperson. I'll remind you that we're only required to take public comments during the required public hearings. If you have a cellphone or other electronic devices, I ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until the meeting is over, so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing the agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation, then myself and council members will possibly ask questions to help us make our decision next week. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of an item and 20 minutes for those in opposition that we give each applicant when they present, and each person has five minutes to talk in totality. Five minutes for those for the item, I mean, 20 minutes for those for the item with five minutes per person, and 20 minutes for those in opposition. Prior to coming to the podium, please give you, there are cards that you should have filled out. They're outside on the desk. We ask that you fill those out and give your name and address for the record, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and address, so that we'll have that for the record. Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question and answer format or debate. We're just here to, for you to give your information. We'll deliberate and make our decision next week. Again, please address all of your comments and concerns to the chairperson, and those are all of the instructions for this evening. If you do have something that is printed, or you have some photos or something you'd like to have for us to see, please give those to our city clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker to my right. She will make copies and disseminate that information to council members, myself and council members for next week. All righty. Now, we will follow the agenda. You can either look on the screen above us, or there are some printed paper agendas outside. So now we'll move on down to the next committee, and we'll go each item for committees, and the person, the chairperson, will lead those committees. So the first one is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the Economic Development Committee tonight.
Yes, sir.
And that is to adopt a resolution to approve DC Blocks Inc.'s participation in the revised 2020 tax plan. And we have tonight before us the illustrious, one and only, Mr. Chris Pumphrey to give us commentary.
Wow. That's a nice introduction.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, 8512 Bowden Street. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening to talk about economic development and new opportunities and investment into our community. We've had the pleasure of working with the team at DC Blocks on this particular project that is in the Riverside West Business Park. But before I go too deeply into about the company and really what we're presenting to you tonight, I would like to ask Chris Gatch, the Executive Vice President of Development, Corporate Development for DC Blocks, to come up and just say a few words about his company and their project, if that's okay.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Chris Gatch, as Chris said, with DC Blocks. First of all, it's a privilege to be here. I've lived in Atlanta since 1997. DC Blocks is actually the third company in Atlanta. I've been part of helping start, and we are a data center company. Like, again, all of our primary headquarters are located here in Georgia. But to date, we've not actually built a data center in Georgia. So we've built facilities in Chattanooga, Tennessee, Huntsville, Alabama, Birmingham, Alabama. We built Greenville, South Carolina, and just did a very exciting Subsea Cable Landing Station in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. And now we have the opportunity to finally do a project at home, and our largest project to date. So what Chris will be presenting is a data center project that we'd like to build in your community for up to, in our industry lingo, 108 megawatts of critical power that we would deliver to the cloud industry. So the customers for these facilities are probably some of the ones who have come through here for incentives in the past. Customers that take down space and power in these kinds of large-scale data centers are the largest technology and cloud companies in the world. They're the ones that we all know, our favorite search engines and cloud companies and social media companies that drive probably 80% or 90% of the traffic on the internet. So the facility, again, that we'll be building by a long shot, is our largest to date. This facility at full capital deployment at the 108 megawatts will be almost $1.2 billion of capital investment, and that is before all of the customer equipment that goes into that facility. So we're seeking these incentives to basically, you know, make the financial model for this project work. As you can imagine, in our industry, we sit between two very demanding constituents. On the buy side of our industry are the best buyers in the world. If we were, if we were the consumer, if this was consumer goods, we, you know, think of it as like trying to sell Walmart. When you're selling to, you know, some of these public cloud companies, because they buy so much capacity of the public internet, they are highly sophisticated buyers that know what things should cost. And on the other side of our industry are the, is the economic fuel that makes it work, which are basically infrastructure fund investors, which obviously have very, you know, very defined return criteria. And in the middle is a company like DC Blocks, who was a developer. And so making all of those numbers balance, incentives are very important to that equation. And they are, as you guys know, because I know you've incentivized many projects like this in the past, they are, they have a history of, these incentives have a, you know, have a history in the data center industry, and so they are typically factored into the decision making of the buyer. So I'm eager to present the details. Chris is going to take you through some of the overall details of the project and what some of the returns will look like, and then I'm glad to answer questions as you have them once he's, once he's done.
Okay. Thank you. Chris, do you want to go through the presentation first?
Yes. So thank you all once again for allowing us to be here in front of you this evening. As Chris mentioned, there is a projection of $1.2 billion that DC Blocks would make into this, this project. And I want to talk a little bit about really what that means. This is a three-phased project. Each phase is defined by the building that will be built. So as, the first building is phase one, the second building, phase two, third building, phase three. And so they will make the investments in, into those facilities. Our property tax incentive, and we've discussed this in the past, is on the investment that DC Blocks makes. So that investment is into the site itself, and in the construction of the building, it's in the infrastructure that makes the building able to be a data center. What is not included in that $1.2 billion number is the investment that's made by the clients, the cloud providers and so forth that Chris mentioned earlier. They will make additional investment, investments into each, each of those phases. And so their investment is considered 100% taxable and is not a part of any of the tax incentive recommendation that we are making. So the whole $1.2 billion has a phased-in approach of property tax incentives that you see there. They are, is a 10-year plan where it's 100% for the first couple of years, and then it starts to phase in over the balance of, of the 10-year period. At the point in time that they start that plan, their clients have also made investments into the facility. There's a rule of thumb in the data center industry, as Chris mentioned, it's a 108-megawatt facility. So you assume roughly $5 million per megawatt, correct? So $5 million per megawatt of investment, that's the servers going into the facility. So we projected that's about $540 million that is going into each one of those phases. Each investment of $540 million is 100% taxed. It is also a depreciating asset that is refurbished every three to five years. So if you take Building One, for example, and let's just assume it's a five-year period, $1.1 billion, $80 million will be invested in personal property, equipment into that building that is 100% taxable, while their investment is, is a part of the incentive. And the same thing carries forward on Building Two. You carry the same amount of megawatts, roughly just assuming, easy numbers, 540 million, twice, same thing, so forth and so on. So what you're looking at is a $1.2 billion investment by DC Blocks and the potential of roughly $3 billion in personal property that is invested into the asset that is 100% taxable. So I know I said a lot there, but I want to answer any questions that might come from that.
Thank you, Chris. Before I open to the floor, a couple of things I wanted to ask about real quick. You can clarify what dark fiber solutions are. It sounds a little sinister, but.
I'll, I'll touch on it, but I know Chris could probably explain it a lot better. You basically, if you've got fiber coming to your home, whether you have AT&amp;T, Comcast, or some other provider, that is on what we call lit fiber, which basically means there are multiple consumers and users that are on that fiber. You are just one of the many. Dark fiber is more kind of dedicated fiber lines where there's no one else on it but you.
Okay.
Is that kind of correct? So.
And maybe you can describe where the location is. I don't know if that's been clear to folks.
Yeah, great. Yeah, thank you. So this project is in Riverside West Business Park, which is off of Riverside Parkway. It is on North River Road, so if you're familiar in that area with the Gordon Food Service kind of being up front, the Microsoft Data Center, which is under construction, this property actually is adjacent to the Microsoft facility.
Zoning is all currently in place, correct?
Yeah, the zoning is all in place.
No need for any changes or anything like that? Okay. I noticed you have a $1.2 billion investment, but it's listing three new permanent jobs. That's $400 million per job. That's, that's going to be some very well-paid small staff.
And I'll let Chris talk about that.
Well, this may sound just about as bad, so the truth is probably a full 108-megawatt scale. We would have a few more people there than that, but the reality is it does not take, you know, these, these buildings are predominantly supported by people who are not permanently stationed there. So the computers, once all that infrastructure is there, don't require a lot of daily interaction. So the, the on-site personnel requirements are pretty low. There will be security there also. We contract that, so that is not listed in our, in our job numbers. But there are a lot of local companies that maintain that facility. For example, just take generators alone, right? We would have in a facility like this probably 50, 50 generators, maybe. And all of those generators are supported by companies, local companies, who do that type of business. So they come in, do the periodic maintenance, repair when they need them, but they're not on our payroll. So, yeah, it's actually very low number of employees.
Well, it's going to be, part of my follow-up question was, I know, I don't know that you, you would have necessarily a buy-local policy, but because I know a lot of the equipment that you require isn't necessarily, you can't go down to the street corner and buy it. You've got to go to certain specialized high-tech companies to find that, so I understand. But you are, you do, you are going to prioritize purchasing local as much as possible, I assume.
Well, yeah, and to your point, some of the equipment, it's a good question. I don't know how much of it, for example, is made in the state, but we certainly prioritize almost by necessity, you know, the contractors that we use, you know, ones that operate out of this region. And the fact is that Atlanta is a big enough market that most of the suppliers that we would contract to do critical maintenance on all of the key systems are located in this area to begin with. You know, they base out of the Atlanta metro area in order to service the southeast. And obviously, this is such a large data center market, there's a very robust business around that. So, yeah, we do source local, you know, the labor that will build this building. I think I heard an estimate of over, you know, 200 jobs during the, you know, multi-year construction time this will be going on. Most of those will be sourced locally as well.
And so most of, you know, most of the return to the community isn't necessarily through the jobs, per se. It sounds like it comes from the, the backend investments that go into the company and the resulting. So, well, I guess at this point, I'll just open the, open the floor then to any questions from the council. We'll start at the far end, Councilwoman Miller. It looked like you were about to say something.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for the presentation. I guess my question is that, of course, this is no small ask, and I do understand that you are looking at putting a huge investment into our community. I think my concern is that with you paying zero tax, that means that there would be 0% that you're putting into the road maintenance where you're going, or if you need first responders at that particular property, or essentially any other city service. That would then come off of the, the backs of everyone else in the community. So I do understand a tax rate, but the zero seems very steep for our community. And correct me if I'm wrong, please.
If I could talk about that. So there are two simultaneous, there's two investments that are taking place. So their investment is the one that's first, and that's really kind of the development investment. And so you're correct, the 0%, you know, for the first couple of years is on their investment. But at the point in time that this plan kicks in, there is a simultaneous investment, and that is the server investment. And so the server investment is the one that is 100% taxed. And so there is no break on that investment, and that's where we say that's about $540 million that's coming in, that will sync up with that year one that you're seeing there. So if you envision them as one company, you in essence are saying, you know, you're, you're putting on the real estate, the break, and then the personal property is not, is 100% taxed.
Thank you for explaining that to me.
Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So Chris, just to make it clear, and from a layman's standpoint, you know, I use that, that word a lot.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure that everyone involved, or everyone that's hearing this understands basically the sticks and bricks you're giving a tax incentive to.
Correct.
To come and build it. But anything that goes in the building, or any other associated industry, or associated supply, or associated work is fully taxed.
Is fully taxed. That's correct.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that, because that's the way it's been explained to us in the past. Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, one other question.
Yes, sir.
Is, that is the Cul-de-sac Industrial Park, last, one of the last ones, I think, that we actually saw developed in the community, and that is, how many acres will that comprise? That, that parcel?
50? Anyway, that particular one is about 54, but it has a lot of topology, so the, you know, the buildable portion of that.
Lot of slope, lot of fall, lot of top. But it is fully developed, I mean, it's ready, it's pad site ready, is that correct?
No, no. They will, they will be clearing that site and getting it prepped for, for development. So it is, it is fully entitled and kind of planned, but they will actually do the construction work and clearing the site and getting it ready.
I would ask that, that we be provided with a map to show that development.
Yes, sir.
For Monday, just so that we can know where it is, because I'm obviously confused with exactly where it's located myself.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have it for you in the morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, I guess just to dole in Chris's evening for coming in, presenting to us. I did have a question about the 20, the resolution for 2020 with the 51 clarifying adjustments for policy and tax incentives and all of that. It's in the first whereas. And so just trying to see what the timeframe for the tax incentive, initially just to come in, and then we don't, is there a 10-year? What was the timeframe for that?
Yes, yes. So you're looking at a 10-year incentive per phase.
Okay.
So Phase One, which is Building One, comes on, there's a 10-year plan for that.
Okay.
Building Two has a 10-year plan, Building Three has a 10-year plan.
So in totality, how many years would the tax incentive, 15, or it just depends on?
It really is going to vary, because if, you know, they get Building One up, and let's say within two years, you know, Building Two is up, or if it's fully leased, like, from the beginning, then they'll probably start the buildings just like that. Or it may be that the business kind of spreads out, and so that timeframe spreads out. But as each one kind of comes on, they're all at different stages. So it's, if you, if you were to say they were sequential, you know, like Building Two did, did start till the end of Building One, then you'd say, yes, it's 30 years, but it's not, it's not a real 30 years. It's, it's just three different 10-year plans.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Burnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Davis?
No, thank you.
Councilman Essens, this is your district.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but from, from your project profile letter, it's currently anticipated it's going to take seven years for all three buildings to be completed and equipped. So if you're, if you're doing an 11-year, I mean, that sounds like a max of, what, 18 years?
Well, it says you're.
To have some form of abatement going on, on one of the three phases, as it, as it's anticipated now. Am I off on?
Yeah, so we, we basically worked with kind of a schedule to assume certain milestones in the investment. And so with that, you know, what we did not, whoops, what we did not want to see is that you've got one incentive out there, and then 10 years later, they come back for the next one. And so that, we don't want to see the 30 years, right? And so we basically kind of worked on an assumed timeline that Phase One is completed, and there's a period of time before Phase Two must commence, and a period of time before Phase Three has to commence. And so the idea in looking at that is that you're talking about maybe by year seven, you know, you're, have commenced Phase Three.
Right. Okay. I mean, I understand some of the concerns about, you know, what, what it was $7 million for three years, we're, we're giving up in tax. But, but with the real property being taxed fully on top of this, I mean, this is just kind of standard procedure for, for attracting these kinds of businesses. So it makes sense to me.
Yeah, we, we created it to where we weren't doing both. We didn't want to do real property and personal property.
And also, the, the way I try to look at these things is it's not like we are taking money out of the current tax revenues. You know, we're just not going to be receiving as much as we might have otherwise without this. So it's still an increase over, over the current total levels. So I, I support this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Essens. One last thing, I guess, unless somebody else had any other questions. Where does this put us as far as the cloud now? We keep hearing percentages, we're 20%, we're 50% of the cloud resides in Douglasville. Do we have any firm handle on that at this point?
I wish I had a firm handle on it. What I do know is that we, we have a good number that are here in the community, and we have a number of inquiries. I will say this as well, and I didn't, didn't touch on this, we've, it's to the point where we're not bringing before you all every company that is requesting a property tax incentive. We actually have had one recently that requested it, and we did not recommend that they receive one, and they are making their investment in the community. They've, I believe they've already acquired the building, and so they are making that investment. And there's another one that we worked with as well, that is not going on a property tax incentive plan as well. So not everyone is getting one, and those are kind of, I would say, I would put them in kind of a smaller scale data center from an investment standpoint. So those are moving forward kind of a 100% real property and personal property. So we are getting a lot of interest, and we have, as we've updated our target sectors, we're really trying to focus more on the, the companies that benefit from the presence of the data centers that are here as well. So really excited about the direction that the community is going, and, and within that particular park, there is one tract left, and there are probably 10 different companies looking at that one tract. So this is the second to the last one in that park, and there's one more to go, and we'll see what, what happens. But the, the interesting thing about this whole particular site is Rooker came to the community with the intention of building a warehouse and distribution park, you know, 10, 11 years ago. And, and that park has taken on a whole different form than what they initially intended it for it to be. It's been a very profitable form for their, for them as well, but I feel like it's also kind of helped achieve some of the concerns that the community had about overdoing it with warehouse and distribution on Riverside.
Good when quality companies are fighting over you, I say. That's a good sign. You still got to come up with that catchy slogan, though, you know, cloud community or something.
Cloud quarter. One other point.
Columbo moment.
Yes, we would be, you know, receiving less in, in property taxes for, for a stretch of time, but a data center uses an astronomical amount of electricity, and we would see an increased sales tax revenue from that, which would offset a, a significant part of it, just so.
You're, you're, yeah, you're exactly right, yeah.
And water.
Sales tax on power is a substantial amount of money that will be paid in taxes over time.
As the mayor pointed out, water is another big usage. I know that WSA is increasing the size of the capacity of their dam as we speak, so they're going to have a substantially larger reservoir within another couple of years. So hopefully that should take care of those issues. Any other questions or comments at this point? Okay. Well, we will take this matter up on Monday, and I appreciate your coming and presenting. Thank you very much.
And we'll have that cycling for you in the morning as well.
Committee at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you for the presentation. We'll move on then to the next committee. Oh, yeah, I was looking at this thing, it's Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under Finance. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Goodwin Mills K. Wood LLC for the design development phase of the new Douglasville City Hall project. Ms. Chelsea Jackson, how are you, Ms. Jackson?
I'm great, Councilwoman Adams. Hope you're well as well. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As you know, in January of 2023, you all held your strategic planning session down at the GMA headquarters. From there, you talked about several goals and objectives for the upcoming fiscal year, and one of those was to continue with the design development phase for the new city hall, proposed new city hall project. The design development phase would be about eight months, and it will be paid for through fund balance and SLOSS, which is about 6.2% of the basic design fees work of the overall construction price, if it went to that part. The timeline, like I said, would be eight months. The project moving forward will also involve a place for the existing city hall staff to temporarily move if construction takes place at the existing location of the current city hall. And this also includes developments of concepts to a point that it can be shared to the public to gauge the interest and to gain support and community support for the overall new facility.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
That was a lot said in a very short period of time.
My apologies.
So basically, this is, this is just for the design phase, and, and you had mentioned the public. Reiterate that one more time for us, please. You would bring the public in, or staff would bring the public in as far as having public input?
Yes, sir, to gauge interest for this, because this may possibly have to go out in a geo bond.
Okay.
So in order to gauge public interest and to ensure that they support a new city hall, GMC as well as city staff would bring in the public stakeholders, much like we've done with master plans, the Art Master Plan, Downtown Master Plan, to bring them in to talk about the design, what they would like to see as relates to city hall as well.
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I know we had talked about it at length, and it's been, it's been on the drawing board, so to speak, for a long time, and this may help it to come to fruition, but I want to make sure that we do have public engagement and buy-in on it, just in case we do have to go out for a geo bond.
Yeah, possibly, yes, sir.
I'll open the floor for any comments or questions for Ms. Jackson. Any one? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me, let's try to break this down just a little bit to make sure everybody's on the same page. The contract before us is strictly for design development, not for construction documents.
That is correct. As you see, it does favor construction documents. There are a few caveats in there. I know section 3.3.3 talks about that, that GMC will stop any, at any time of the design phase if the owner, also known as the city, would not like to proceed. So at every phase of the basic design service, so that would be the schematic design phase, they would have to come back and seek approval. The design development phase, they would have to seek approval, construction documents and construction administration. At every point of that, in the contract, it does say that it will have to be owner-approved prior to them commencing the next phase.
And so the overall percentage of the design process, so through schematic design and design development, what percentage did you say it was?
So for the basic design phases, which is the four phases, including schematic design phase, the design development phase, construction documents, as well as construction administration, will be about 6.2% of the overall construction price.
Construction cost, now I'm asking, of the design phase, which is schematic design, design development, construction documents, construction administration, what percentage of that is going to be the design, through design development?
We don't have exact percentage, it just depends on at what point they come back to us. So every month, they'll actually bill a certain percentage to us, and within the first eight months, that's when the first two phases will be complete. But they just set out the overall 6.2% of the total price.
I want to be clear, only because, and I don't mean this in any way to, GMC is a spectacular design firm, they do fantastic work. I just want to make sure that we're understanding that we're going to be, we're going to have that hold period before we get into construction documents, because anybody who understands how that works, if you put construction documents on a shelf, they age very quickly. And I, and this is the overall contract, if I'm reading correctly, is about $2.6 million for the design, all the way through, start to finish. I don't want to see the city spending $2.6 million on a design that's going to end up on a shelf and never go anywhere. Technology changes, building method, methods and methodologies change over time, tastes will change, and it can, we may have a whole different council at the time that the construction begins, so that's a lot of money to, to throw away if we, if we're not certain of that. So I want to make sure that we don't get that far. Typically, my experience is we usually go about 10% of the design fee goes towards schematic design, another rough 20, 25% is design development. So we're going to be about a third of the way through the design process when we hold it, when we put a hold on and then engage the public. So if we look at that, that's still going to be, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. We're just going to be very careful about, you know, this process and do it very deliberately. So I just want to be, like I said, again, it's not a reflection on, you know, GMC in any way, shape or form, it's just that we want to be concerned about the taxpayer.
I got a comment, Ms. Jackson. We're not going past conceptual plans. Part of the reason is we don't have funding. So if you remember back in January, your goal to do this was to have conceptual plans to get support for the citizens that this is something that we need, so we're not going beyond that. The other is, we have to come up with a funding and a financing strategy for whatever we decide to do, so we're not going to come back before you to get anywhere close to architectural renderings.
I don't know that this is what you're looking for, but on 20, on page 24, section 11.5, it gives the compensation for those basic services you've mentioned and the percentage. Is that what you're looking for?
What page did you say?
Page 24.
24.
And then also in addition, thank you for that, Councilwoman Adams, on page 83, it talks about the different percentages as well.
Page what?
83, it talks about the 15% of the 2.2 would be the schematic design, another 15% will be the design development, the 50% for the construction cost, and then 20% for the construction administration. So thank you for pointing that out.
I think that's what you were looking for.
That's it, yeah, and that's exactly what I, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I had the percentages shifted slightly, but that's, it still comes out the 30% through design development. So, yeah, that's exactly what it would be. So, yeah, that, and that's, and that's, schedule is fairly normal for the process. So I guess that's not, it's not this, what's behind it, I just want to make sure we're, we know what we're getting into as we, as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Jackson, thank you for your input, your presentation. We'll take this up then on Monday. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate that committee, and Ms. Jackson, thank you for bringing this light, and Mr. Mayor Protem for your expertise in that area. We'll move on then to Housing and Community Affairs Committee. The chair is Councilmember Dr. LaShad Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Housing and Community Affairs tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
I just said I have no business, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee, the vice chair is Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one item this evening. That is to authorize the mayor to sign an engagement agreement with Ms. Lois Gerstenberger for continued city solicitor services. I know that we've already spoken about this at length in our committee meetings. I do see that Ms. Gerstenberger, I believe, is here underneath the podium, sorry. And Ms. Miranda Jordan as well, but I felt like there might have been a couple more questions from you guys, I'm not sure.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I did have a question. Ms. Gerstenberger, would you come forward and, and just give us your name and address for the record to make things proper, so to speak?
I will, thank you. I'm a short person back there.
And you may have to pull that down.
There you go. Thank you. My name is Lois Gerstenberger. I'm your solicitor in your municipal court located at the Public Safety Complex. I've been doing that for quite some time and enjoy serving the citizens of our community. I'm privileged to have that role and would love to continue in that role. We've made some updates and some changes in the municipal court. That have been good changes. If you have any questions, if you'd like to come and visit us, I know several of you have come into court and watched me try cases and do other things, please come and join us. The major calendars that I handle are with the public defender's office, with private attorneys that are coming in on our cases, and then with bench trials, where we're actually trying the cases in front of the court and asking the court to render a verdict. The majority of our cases this year have really been drunk driving cases. We've prosecuted many of those cases, as well as shoplifting cases coming out of the mall and some other, some other areas. We have arraignment schedules, we have other calendar schedules, and have been a very busy municipal court. I'm available to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Judge, I just wanted to ask the question, it was asked of us a moment, a little bit ago in our other discussion, and I said, well, I think I'll just wait and ask the judge, just to see. How long have you been doing this?
Okay, I'm the solicitor, so I-
Right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Well, well, that was a promotion.
Ms. Gerstenberger, how long have you been doing this?
Well, I've been prosecutor since 1982.
Right.
So my career is quite lengthy. I've been working for the city of Douglasville since 2010.
Okay, okay. Are you happy with the arrangement that has been set up, that has been proposed in this, in this change?
Yes, sir.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, so the added workload, the added hours, the added expenses, you're okay with it? It seems as though it's, it's right in the middle of, of where our area of other solicitors are being compensated.
Yes, sir.
Is that, and that's, that's fine with you?
Yes, sir.
You're happy with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for what you do, and we hope you're able to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Hello, Ms. Gerstenberger, how are you?
Hello, Mayor, I'm doing fabulous, I hope you are as well.
I am, thank you so much, and thank you for what you've done for us for such a very long time, since 2010. I did want to ask about, when Ms. Attorney Jordan talked to us, she said that the appellate, the appeals portion of court now has really changed, and that has really put kind of more of a load on you, as well as us having Environmental Court, in that now the code compliance officers can not really try the case and represent the city of Douglasville, but their load has become more because they're paying more attention as we're building. And when those cases come before the judge, that we need someone to represent the city of Douglasville and not have our code compliance officer kind of adjudicating or just being the attorney and the code compliance officer. Is that, is that part of what has changed?
Yes, ma'am, those are three very important areas that have changed. The new Unified Appellate Practice Act goes into effect on July 1st, and it totally revamps the way appeals are handled, and pushes many things down from the district attorney's office presenting those on behalf of the city, down to the solicitor presenting those, which I'm competent to do and happy to do, but it will increase the workload. It also unified the procedure to make it much easier for litigants to get a final resolution or a review of a final resolution in a superior or a state court. That will be a big change coming up here. The Environmental Court has hit the ground running this year. Already, our judge has handled many, many cases. I've been privileged to be in that court with Ms. Jordan and assist her in presenting those cases. I think we've been a good team. She comes in with the civil practice, and I come in with the criminal practice, and we've, we've been able to accomplish a lot already, but that will increase our workload quite significantly. In fact, I was just notified, I think, the other day that we've added 69 more cases onto our next calendar. So those cases are coming in quickly, and we're resolving them quickly or reaching compliance agreements very quickly. So yes, ma'am, there are some increased workloads that will be coming down the pike.
You can handle all of that by yourself?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And the last thing is for compensation. I think the last time, you know, you're very gracious, you had come to us maybe in 2018, and we looked at your compensation, so now this is five years later, with more work that you're coming again, it's not like you could be warranted based on the work that you're providing for us. So that's correct, that was the last time, 2018, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it was 2018.
That you had an increase. All right, thank you so much. That's all I had, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone else? Nope, okay. I did have one question just about how your budget works, because I know that you had a few asked as far as your supplies go and some of your books that you need, and also in travel. Do you have a regular budget that you can use to purchase the things that you need?
I do not. I, I simply work as a contract legal services provider for the city.
Okay.
So I handle those on my own.
Okay, thank you, and I think all my other questions-
That would, I think that would require us setting up an off, office of the solicitor, I think, in order to do that, which we don't have, I guess, right, correct?
That does make sense, okay. I appreciate that, and we definitely appreciate you taking the time to come in here and talk to all of this and serve our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, it's a service that I've enjoyed providing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, guys, let's take this up on Monday, please. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Madam Mayor, that's all that we had this evening for Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and thank you again to our solicitor for Municipal Court Attorney Gerstenberger, as well as Attorney Jordan for giving us that information. So we'll move on from Personnel and Organization to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items tonight under Planning and Development. Item A is to consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of adopting Laurel Wood Phase Two, 12.018 acres at Reservoir Drive in Land Lot 24, District One, Section Five. Parcel ID is 00240150010. Application by Greg Hasty, Ms. Marissa Jackson, our staff will be presenting. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, Marissa Jackson, Planning and Development Administrator, 6701 Church Street. This is a request for a final plat. Staff has reviewed the request, and we find that it meets the city's standards for approval.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. So tell us a little bit about this. This, this plat is chock full of information, and it's very, very difficult on the iPad to read.
Yes, sir, so this is for a townhome development, it's for the Laurel Woods subdivision. There is phase one that is currently under development, this is for phase two.
Okay, and could you help us with, I don't know that I see a line where phase one stops and phase two starts. How many, but phase one I know is under development, I'm, I'm close to that.
Yeah.
I live close to there, and so I'm close to that. So phase two would be the next phase of development. Has phase one construction actually started?
Yes, sir, it has started. There are some units that have been completely completed and issued certificates of occupancy. There's others in phase one that are still under construction.
Any issues with phase one as it being completed as agreed?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. Questions, comments of council, anyone? Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, you raise your hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern is, and I'm seeing, do we not have requirements, UDO, that requires sidewalks on all new developments?
I need to double check that for you.
Because I see a number of blocks on here that do not have sidewalks, including the ones that have already been built, which there is no sidewalk on several of those blocks. And I thought, it was my impression that all new residential developments have to have sidewalks.
I will confirm that and have an update for you on Monday.
So if you look carefully, and you'll see quite a few of these blocks that don't have them, and I'd like to come back to that. So that was, other than that, it looks pretty nice. No, it's, it's, it is coming along, but I, I will stick up, taken care of. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Fableton Road and Land Lot 52, District One, Section Five. Parcel ID 00520150017 and 00520020150036. Plans dated May 22nd, 2023. Application by William Mark Sist AIA. Mr. Marcus Thompson is going to help us with that. Mr. Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. So the project before you this evening involves the construction of a 4,800 square foot storage facility, 2,400 square foot service bay, and 1,500 square foot office. The site plan indicates access to the development from Fableton Road only, a total of 330. Off-street parking spaces are proposed, in addition to two 504 square foot areas designated for loading. The facade materials proposed for this development are brick, cement, base wood, siding, and material, metal panels for the roof. I have attached the application site plan and building elevations plan with the material, material percentage table shown. City staff has reviewed the application and attachments and recommends approval with the following conditions, first being approval from the Community Development Department for an exemption plat to combine Parcell 17 and 36, and lastly, an approval from Georgia Department of Transportation for the driveway connection to State Route 92, Fableton Road, prior to the issuance of the land disturbance permit. Applicant is present for any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Questions, comments? Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. How you doing, Mr. Thompson? Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Good. I did have a couple of questions. I did have a couple of questions. Now, is Vic's tires?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is that on the corner of, oh, that's your tire. Vic's tire is at the, as soon as you come off of I-20, on the right-hand side?
That is correct.
Okay, so this will house, in the 30, first I was going to ask you, 30 off-street parking spaces, is that, is that congruent with what we require as far as parking is concerned?
Yes, they do meet the requirements for parking for that specific use.
Okay, and is it going to still be a tire facility? Or fixing cars, is a mechanic, are they changing the format of the business?
I'd say the business use will stay the same. I think the, the new additions are pertaining to, majority pertaining to storage.
Okay, to house all the tires?
That's correct. And Mr. Vic is here, present, if you want to speak to him.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Thompson. Hey, Mr. Vic, you want to come up, just in case we have a question for you?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protim, do you have a question?
I do, but I can let them go ahead and present if they want to say something.
Gentlemen, did you all have a presentation that you wanted to make as a part of this?
No.
You just want to be available to answer questions?
Right, the drawings or the presentation?
Okay, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
William Sisk, 743 Maynard Terrace, Atlanta, Georgia.
And you are the architect?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Thank you, okay. I'll open the floor for questions of the applicant, and we'll start on the far end of the desk there with Ms. Estes. If anyone has any questions, just come down the line. Mr. Davis?
Yes, I was just glad to see Mr. Vic finally making some, some attempts.
Some progress, yes, sir, so are we.
Yep, so I appreciate you going through the process, and thanks a lot.
Stanley?
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, sir. The only thing I would say, I guess there's two ways of looking at this. One is I think we're all probably very glad that we're going to have a facility that will enclose all the tires that have been sitting out. That's, that's probably the most important thing. The second, the second part of that is, you know, everybody, I think, here needs to take, and I'm not passing judgment one way or the other, I just said, everybody needs to take a good look at this and make sure they're happy with what they see, because this is the very, very first thing you see when you come off Interstate 20. This is your Welcome to Douglasville structure. So I just caution everybody to take a good look at it, sir.
There's no more prominent parcel.
Absolutely, this is, this is where our Welcome to Douglasville sign is, so to speak. So, actually, no, literally, it is actually at that, it's actually at that, sorry, Douglasville sign. So that's all I will present.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Actually, I have a question for Community Development. I know that, is that okay?
It's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reed. So I know that in the past, we've had some cases in court, and I was just curious if we've gotten those cleared up?
Not at this time, but this will help address that.
Councilwoman Miller, if I can address your question?
Yes, please.
There's a current compliance agreement in place between the city of Douglasville and Mr. Yago, who is the owner of Vic's tires. And that agreement is currently in good standing, and was part of what precipitated these plans being submitted to the city. And as soon as a lot of those issues are cleared up, that are related to the condition of the property, lack of storage that's going on right now, then that compliance agreement will be satisfied.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. And then also, I know that we've been looking at our design standard. Does this building meet our new standards?
We haven't adopted those, so until we adopt some new standards, this will fall under your current standards.
Okay, thank you. And that was all of my questions at this time.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. We have all, we've all seen something similar to this in the last couple of years that came forward. There was a building package at one time, and I'm, I'm not aware whether it's still there or not, that was dropped and was being, being stored on one of the adjacent sites to this. Is that building package still planned to be used as a part of these improvements?
Yes, it is.
And that building package has been there for many years, I'm not sure. So the plans that you are giving us incorporate that building package, and they will meet our current UDO standards?
Yes.
Okay. Will this business be ran while all of these improvements are being done? Or will it be, or will it be shut down in order to do the refurbishment of the, what is now the...
Continue to, well, he isn't like gonna, he's gonna continue to run the existing business and the existing structure until the new one is, at least got a temporary CO, so he can start using it. Then they will start closing down the parts of the existing structure, and at this point, it's supposed to be used for additional storage. Any overflow storage from the main building?
My concern is, is I have stated in previous meetings and in previous attempts and previous applications with this site is, we've had issues, we have issues. Are we going to have larger issues when we enlarge the project? That's my concern. And how long is it anticipated for this to be, before this is done? Because you've already, you've just mentioned a temporary CO.
Well, that's for the new structure, that's a complete, you know, that's going to be a completely different thing.
What I'm trying to say is, I don't really want to see us do something partially completed, because we have enough of that already.
Yeah.
That's my point, okay? We discussed that.
But as long as he can continue to operate the existing building while that one's under construction, we should be fine.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty?
I'm sorry, I have, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't have a comment earlier, but I do. I just want to say to the applicant, I know this journey has been very difficult. I am very excited to see what is happening. I just want to say I'm glad for the progress.
Thank you, I'm very excited too.
And the, yeah, the challenges have been very overwhelming. And thank you for, for sticking it out and being compliant. I just want to say thanks, it's been a lot.
Any others? Okay, we'll take this up on Monday. We thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Planning and Development. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and, and we appreciate the presentations by Ms. Jackson and Mr. Thompson, and thank you to Mr. Yago for coming in. We appreciate it. Yes, sir. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. The next committee is Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple items. I'm going to start with item A, adopting ordinance to amend chapter 10 of the city of Douglasville Code of Ethics to add license classification and to exempt additional license classification from distance requirement and for the purpose of correcting grammatical and use error. Ms. Hampton, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As you know, in your committee meetings, we went over all of the changes that we discussed, including the new definitions that you would like to add, the uses. Those are attached to your committee meeting. Ms. Jordan is aware that she is to correct some of those issues and make certain that there's compliance with state law. But if you all are satisfied, she can answer any further questions that you may have. And this item is complimentary to the next item as well. But I know Ms. Jordan can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Estes.
As, as we discussed, I did not get the updated version of this until after the committee meetings was over. So I'm going to reserve comment until Monday possibly, so that I can go through this in detail.
Right, exactly.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I'd like to bring it back on Monday and for further discussions. Okay, let's move right along to item B. Refer to the Planning Commission and propose amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance regardless alcohol use classification. I believe it's basically about the same as the other one.
Yes, sir, in order for these to comply with your Unified Development Ordinance, you will have to refer this to the Planning Commission for them to make a recommendation for you all to vote.
Now I'd like to bring it back on Monday, Madam Mayor, put it back on the agenda for Monday.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We look forward to the added information to help us to be able to make our decision on Monday when we come back. We'll move on then to item number 14, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. The vice chair is you as well, Councilman Davis, you have another committee. You hear me, Councilman Davis? You're the vice chair?
Yes. Okay. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for planning services with Lofts and Associates, INC., DBA, Lofts Design for Planning Services for the Park and Recreation. Chris Fox, please. Chris Bass.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Chris Bass, Parks and Recreation Director, ADA 30 Gurley Road. During your retreat in January, I shared that we were near completion of the 115 recommendations from our Parks Master Plan. So one of the goals was, at that time communicated to us, was to develop a new plan. So we are seeking approval to enter into an agreement with Lofts and Associates for planning services to develop the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. We put the RFP out in April of this year, and that RFP, those, the RFP closed May, May 19th. We received three bidders at the time. Lofts and Associates was based on evaluations, based on references, based on previous experience with our department, Lofts and Associates, was the firm that the committee selected. So we're looking to go into that agreement with this particular company. The scope of work for this master plan includes conducting kickoff meetings, research, information assembly, and a host of interviews, those being one-on-one and community interviews to get that community input. New from the 2018, I'm sorry, and I failed to mention that Lofts and Associates is this firm that we used in 2018 to develop the first master plan. So they're very familiar with our, our city. But new from the 2018 plan to now is the online public input in order to gauge more engagement from our residents. Demographic research, site evaluation, the equity gap analysis, connectivity analysis, the parks facility and land needs assessment, the capital improvement plan, the program analysis, partnership analysis, a budget analysis, and our fees and charges analysis, which is important to us considering the market has changed tremendously over the past five years. Staffing assessment and operation budget. And then finally, just like the plan that we currently are operating out of, a strategic implementation plan with all of the recommendations. And the project is expected to be completed 210 days after the notice to proceed. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, yes, Madam Mayor and council?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, anyone else from the council? Thank you, Mr. Bass, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bass, and you, and the Lofts have done work for us before.
Yes, sir, they have.
Okay, very good, young man. Thank you, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chairman. We appreciate you taking that committee. And thank you, Mr. Chris the Rock Bass, for bringing the report. We'll move on then to item number 15, Technology Committee, chaired by Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there is no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protim. Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business under Transportation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any other business to come before council tonight from council members? Yes, sir, Councilman Estes?
I, I don't know that it's considered business, but, but I just wanted to brag a little bit on our staff, after spending several days in Savannah, and speaking with people from all municipalities all over the state. Almost everybody I encountered heard I was from Douglasville, and they started raving about our staff individually and collectively. Teachers during classes mentioned them specifically. It was just every hour somebody was, was talking. It made me so proud, as I know we all are. So I just wanted to acknowledge the amazing staff that we have here at the city.
Thank you so much, Mr. Estes. Madam Protim is giving you a clap like the icon with the fingers or something. But yes, sir, you are correct. We do have several staff that have really made a mark for themselves in the state of Georgia. And so when we have this annual report or annual convention that we have every year, people, because they've done such a great job, they'll ask our city manager, our HR director, our chief of police, our finance, they just ask by name for staff members in the city of Douglasville. And they've built their portfolio to be trusted, so it is a blessing to be from this community. And also, I had an award that we received, I was going to say under other business. It's to the city of Douglasville, we are a city of civility. And it was designated by the Georgia Municipal Association at this last conference. So this is the leadership that we've taken a pledge to treat people how we want to be treated, to be civil in meetings, not, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and trying to provide customer service to the citizens as well. So this goes to the city elected officials and the entire staff. So we appreciate the designation, receiving this award from GMA, that we are a city of civility in Douglasville. All righty, any other business? All right, not having anything, we'll move on down to item number 18, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our deputy chief?
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Deputy Chief JR. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am, just to state, we do have an executive session for a brief update for you all.
Brief update, okay. Thank you so much, city manager. Now we've come to the portion, comments from our citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, yes, ma'am, please come forward. And you have five minutes to address myself and council members about any business that has remained to the city of Douglasville.
Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way. And I only have a question on 10, the Planning and Development Committee, on Laurelwood subdivision. Could somebody tell me how many lots are in Phase 1 and how many lots in Phase 2?
Ms. Reed?
We will get it over to, yeah.
And, and I think that they were required to have sidewalks when it was zoned.
Yes, ma'am, so we'll follow up on that, and Ms. Reed can get that information for you. Is that correct, city manager? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Ms. Welch. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Yes, sir, please come forward. Pastor, and give us your name and address for the record, and we invite you to talk to us about anything. We have five minutes.
Pastor, Dr. John Rogers.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for everything you all do. Appreciate you guys, and all that's going forward in Douglas County, all the dirt that's moving, we really appreciate the growth and development.
Yes, sir.
I live on the north side, and we are looking for some streetlights on Odessa. I don't know if it's approved or not at Camp Street in Odessa. And also Ella Street, it should be about 28-foot wide. It might be 20-foot wide by now, because the trucks have totally eaten both sides of the road up. Personally, I've been running off the road twice, but... The other thing, you know, in 2018, we finished the, the first bridge, which is Strickland Street Bridge. It's been five years, and yet it's not open. I'm just one person, but I, I can't wrap my head around why that traffic is not coming through right there. It's, not only to top that off, when you're at Ella Street and you're at the 92 connection, at the red light at 92, and Ella Street, you have exactly 30 seconds to get through the light. 30 seconds. I lost a friend last year who was hit by a Xfinity van running 78 miles an hour. Flipped his vehicle three times. He lasted about six months with Grady. And I just feel like it's time for somebody to invest in the north side. I mean, we got a liquor store, but that's not doing as much good. We got some apartments that are one way in, one way out. But the roads and the deer... roads and the deterioration added to the forty percent raise of our taxes, it's major. And, and we need some action over there on that side of town. And I would greatly appreciate it if you guys could take it into consideration. All I've been doing is praying about it and praying about it and praying about it. And I thought I might come up here tonight and just tell you that we need help on the north side, on the northeast side. We need some help on our roads and the way we get around. If any of you could take time to ride Ella Street, ride it all the way from the ninety-two bypass to Huey Road and ask yourself, was that acceptable for you to drive on for your children, your grandchildren? That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Pastor Rogers. We will look and see where the, I think we do have a list and, yeah, for streetlights. I'm not certain, but the streets, the names were Camp, Ellis and Odessa.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Strickland, well, before I get to that, well, Strick, the Strickland Street Bridge that you talked about, not to answer everything, but we'll talk with G dot. That's a G dot project to see the progress and see what the status is. I'm sorry you lost someone with that traffic issue, to see what the status of when, if we can synchronize the lights or how that's, it's out of our control at this point. But we'll talk to G dot. And, and we're investing as a city all over the city. You know, the twenty-five million dollar referendum for Jesse Davis Park was passed a couple of years ago. We're resurfacing streets. Gateway Village subdivision is, I, I was just there with the chief about a month ago. So they're in their last phase. Homes are selling like hotcakes. So a lot is going on. New applications come all the time and we have, like you said, apartments are coming up and other subdivisions. So there, there are some things. They might be small. You don't see the big splash, but once it's all up, hopefully you'll be able to see some difference has been made.
Yes, ma'am. One last thing, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Today they are drilling at eighty oh five, eighty fifteen, eighty twenty-five, they're drilling wells in front of our properties. And I was wondering, did anybody know anything about that?
Where wells are being drilled?
Huey Road.
On Huey Road.
Eighty, it's eighty oh five, eighty fifteen, eighty twenty-five. They got the roads all blocked off there today, all day long drilling.
I'm not sure. City manager, you got the information? We can follow up with you, pastor.
It's called Street Safe. That was the name of the corporation that was doing all the drilling.
Street Safe. Oh, and Willing Workers Park. Have you been to Willing Workers Park?
You know, I run by there every now and then.
Oh, my goodness, it's beautiful.
Yes, ma'am.
We were just there, I was, a couple of weeks ago for the seniors, we had a walk. So there's a path, a nature trail. The whole new park is absolutely beautiful. So some work has been being done.
Yeah. I just want to come further east.
We're working on it.
Cross ninety-two, please.
Wrong one's a building. Now, do you, did you hear me say all the projects?
He is in the east. Look to the west.
Come on now, we're coming. We're coming. Give us a, give us a chance. Difference has been made.
Madam Mayor, may I please make a comment?
Yes, please.
I just could not sit here and not say anything. Thank you so much, Pastor Rogers. And I don't want to go in detail too much because I'm really passionate in regards to what he's saying. I, I can recall maybe two years ago, Madam Mayor, we were supposed to have a meeting with the commissioner of G dot. That meeting never happened. There's no, there's only one true safe crossing on the, on, in the New Horizon area. I mean, yes, I am a council member that share with Councilman Davis and we are appreciative of the parks. But I agree with Pastor Rogers. There, there are, is, there are things that should have been done a long time ago. You can only say it so much. And at this level, our level, is just not fair. You, you can build parks and he's right. If you drive Ella Street, I take my granddaughter to school in the morning, it is very dangerous and there are no lights. And if you're driving there at night, it's horrible. So it's not, this is not something we have not talked about for years and years. And I feel your pain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burdanley. Of course, you know, that meeting with the commissioner has not taken place because they said that there really, there isn't anything else to talk about. The commit, you know, we can't make them meet us.
We cannot make them meet us, but we can write, we can call, and just not to do nothing is not acceptable. It's just not.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, if you, if you don't, and like I said, I don't want to, we can talk about it later and Ms. Hampton and I have gone round and round. But you can't, you, you have to. They can say that, but it doesn't mean that we can't write, we can't call because it doesn't get done.
We can continue to do that.
And there's no crossing. I have, I have actually witnessed individuals in wheelchairs who cannot get across the tracks. I just had a conversation with Ms. Shayla and she, she said, you know, this is something we're gonna look into. It is, it's sad. People in wheelchairs cannot cross the, the railroad. And you can have parks, but if you can't cross pedestrians, it, it's sad. It really is. And it's, it cannot be overlooked.
Yes, ma'am.
It cannot. And he is absolutely correct. It's been way too long. Just because they say they're not gonna talk, it doesn't mean we, we cannot.
We can definitely continue to try to make a headway with the commissioner and, and have those conversations and make the phone calls like I've done. And as well as look at these streets to see about the streetlights. I'm not certain if whose jurisdiction that's under. I know we do have a list from A E com about resurfacing and it gives us a gauge of, you know, which streets needed the most based on our algorithm. But we'll see with transportation, engineering, Mr. Gregg and whomever else about the lights. City manager?
These things are already in the works. So we'll have, we'll have an E T, an estimated time for you on Monday.
Okay, great. So it's on the list already?
Absolutely. Streetlights repaving. So we'll have it. We'll have the information to you on Monday.
Good. That's good. That's good. That's good. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. And we'd love to hear any comments that you have.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Counsel, my name is Olivia Buckner. I live at forty-five fourteen Glider Circle.
Yes, ma'am.
What brings me here today is when I received my twenty twenty-three tax assessment, I couldn't get an answer from our tax assessor's office. The phone would just ring, ring, ring. So I tried a couple other numbers that were on the paper that was sent to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I was able to leave messages. Nobody has called me back to date. I then started calling your office, in which I got a phone call on Wednesday from Cameron, which I thank you for.
Yes, ma'am.
I called my District Four, Mike.
Alcaraz?
Yes. Waiting for him to call me. The only gentleman I was able to talk to, Mr. Estes. Thank you very much for answering my question, but I'm still in the same spot. Am I affected by it? I don't know. The assessment was two thousand four, four dollars more than normal. My house was assessed probably about sixty, seventy thousand more. And there's no way that, that vinyl house is worth that much. So I'm asking this board, this council. We had this glitch in the system come up. Two things. Will you put anytime an issue such as this comes up, not just on the Douglas, celebrate Douglas website, but the city of Douglas website? And also when you go straight to the property tax assessor's office, if you can put it there as well. Because I know for myself, I just went straight to the property tax assessors website and all that there was is click the red button to pay the, pay your assessments. I just want to be informed more. And I know it's a waiting process to see, am I one that was affected? I would also like this board to consider possibly extending the appeal process due to the fact that we did have a glitch in the system and we don't know when we're gonna receive that second paper. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, thank you for coming in. And I do know, Mr., we were out of town at a annual conference, but Mr. Anderson made me aware that you had tried to get to our office. The taxes are out of, that's under the tax commissioner and that is not in the, under the auspice of the city council. So we cannot extend any dates or put any information out there because it's not under the umbrella of the city of Douglasville and the services we provide. So everything is at the county level and the taxes are with the county tax commissioner.
So who can I talk to at that department?
Madam Hair.
Oh, I apologize.
If I may. Wonderful to see you. After our conversations the other day, I, I spoke with Ms. Jackson, our assistant city manager, and she was going to find out what people or processes you can pursue. But the mayor is right. I mean, as, and as you and I discussed on the phone, you know, we have no control over, over the tax assessor's office or the, or these, you know, these notices going out. That, that's just, we don't handle that at all. But Ms. Jackson will give you some information that I hope will help you.
Okay.
Yeah, and appeals, there is an appeals. I got my, my letter as well. There is a, a number that you can go to, to appeal your, your assessment.
Right. And I had called that number and left a, a couple messages with Andrea Lavarceks. And I haven't heard anything.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just waiting.
I apologize. Yeah, but it's, we'll call you back. Someone called. We just, it's not under our umbrella.
At least within twenty-four hours. I've been on three days now.
Yes, ma'am. And so it is, it's not on our website because, or anything on the face of the city because it's not part of our responsibility.
That's fine. That's good understanding. Now I can take it back because I do live in a homeowners association and I am our treasurer.
Yes, ma'am.
They do come to my door asking, what are you gonna do? I said, well, let me go find and get some answers for us.
Yes, ma'am. I think the city manager had something that you-
I was just gonna suggest to you all, since this is a huge countywide issue, we can get community relations to post something, a link that goes to Douglas County page, basically notifying citizens if they have any questions or concerns related to their tax notices. This is where you go. Now, it may not help with the customer service on that end, but at least it can direct the people to where they need to go. And we can post something as well on social media. But we'd be happy to have a conversation with you afterwards. But to the elected official, Councilman Estes and the mayor, I mean, it's not under our jurisdiction, but we'll try to help you as best we can.
We always learn from-
Yes, ma'am.
-instances that come up. We can only get better. And that's what we want to do.
And thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention because the city is within the county. So if someone, it gives us an opportunity to steer you in the right direction.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Aliyah Roberts and I live at three two one nine Blackley Old Road in Douglasville, Georgia. I've been here several times to talk about things I don't like and I don't want to see. I wanted to do something different today and actually talk about something that I am in support of. Just wanted to use this opportunity to speak in favor of the changes to the code of ordinances. Just two primary points that I wanted to, to kind of highlight is that these new definitions, I, I feel personally bring Douglasville into the modern entertainment age and a little bit more in line with what the rest of Atlanta is doing. And I'm supportive of that. And also by amending the allowed principal use tables, I think that would enable additional growth and development and essentially giving more opportunities for establishments within Douglasville that are the types of businesses that I may want to frequent without having to drive all the way to Atlanta. So something different. I wanted to actually speak in favor of something tonight. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you so much. Two of them came back and said, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. We appreciate that. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Thank you. Well, I don't see anything else. We are, I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a personnel matter after a short recess.
So moved.
Oh, it was hearty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have. We are adjourned to executive session to discuss a personnel matter after a short recess.